So we might as well get started. Any adjustments to the agenda? Hearing none. Audience and communication, we have none, other than our budget buddies. Thank you again for being here. So we'll go right into discussion matters.
I'm not sure if he was intending to pass that out. Did he say?
Okay.
Yeah. So, update on the financials. So we have not heard officially about healthcare, but unofficially, we have heard that hypothetically, the number could be 5%. What's in your budget is 10%. And so if that were to pass, then that would be a $30,000 savings. So that's good news. You have $159,877 in your fund balance.
I'm sorry, what was that?
$159,877. And your last first quarter financial management review showed that you were trending to the positive $221,545. So that's a healthy fund balance.
I'm sorry, what was it trending?
$221,545 at the end of the first quarter.
We're gonna give you sheets of this.
Oh, okay, alright.
So statewide, in terms of how that impacts you, last year, in the year that we're in, you had 505 equalized pupils. And next year, it's early estimate looking like 520. So that's a 3% increase. Also, good news. So I'm hoping you're seeing a trend here. Good news, good news. The statewide tax rate, which was announced by the Tax Commissioner last year, is 98 cents. That's a two cent increase compared to seven cents last year. So even though nobody's celebrating, that is really pretty good news. The statewide base amount, so that's what we get per equalized pupil, last year $92.85, this year $94.59. And it's not exactly right to characterize it that that's what we get. We get whatever we ask for, but that's the revenue that comes in. So when you net out those two last figures, the two cent increase and the differential between base amount this year and base amount next year, that nets out to a .17% increase. Also, good news.
On baseline?
On tax rate.
Tax rate, okay.
So your baseline is at 2%. The healthcare, if hypothetically, it came out to be what we've been hearing. And usually, this is how this plays out. We always hear ahead of time. But we don't have the not to exceed letter yet. Is at .17%. That's what you would, the offset you would get for healthcare. That's the same thing as the statewide tax estimate, .17. So those two cancel each other out. You have 3% increase in the base amount, based on what's actually there and your increased pupil. So if that's everything that came into play, you're likely to see a decrease in your tax rate. So, good news, good news, good news.
Say that again.
Yeah, can you say that again?
So I, your question is... Will the, listen to VPR coming here.
Yeah.
The Jeb's balding saying that state revenue's are not even, are well behind what they expect. Does that have any impact on, could that historically have any impact on all this?
You know, when the legislature comes into session, they could, they could say, you know what, we cannot afford this base amount. They could say, you know what, that two cent increase isn't nearly enough.
Got it. Okay.
But usually, that doesn't happen.
Right.
Because, you know, they're, they have constituents too. But that's how it works. That's why these are preliminary numbers, why we're not, we're gonna give Keith a copy here as the board chair. But really, we don't usually distribute this and...
But historically, that's not what happens.
Historically, when they say it's looking like, instead of 10%, it's gonna be 5%, that's what it ends up being.
Right.
Historically, when they say it's two cents on the tax rate, especially two cents. Usually, it works the other way. They say it's gonna be 11, and the legislature says, no way. It needs to be less than that, and they knock it down. So for us, I think this is good news. I haven't really had a lot of time to like sit and digest it. But I really do think that since 2008, you've been squeezing every nickel. At some point, there ought to be a place where you go, yes, finally, all that hard work is having a positive impact, and it sure looks like. So just in terms of the SU, because of course, there's an SU assessment in there. If the SU Board, which meets in another week, if the SU Board were to authorize the two decision packets that are there, that would be more than offset by the 5% reduction in healthcare cost. So there should even be a little reduction in the assessment from baseline. There certainly, it certainly will never be more than what's in there. Even, even if the SU Board were to accept both of the decision packets. So that's just as context. That's where we are today. Obviously, these numbers all get solidified, including the equalized per pupils and all of that.
Can I ask a question? Where do you see the ranges of fund balances? If the, if it's trending toward $221, how do you, how do you look at that?
Kind of look as a percentage of the budget number, or there's a range you want to stay within, or what's the rule of thumb there?
No, usually, we like to think about $300,000 as that's the healthy range. I mean, it's really a contingency fund. And I know that boards every year put money as revenue from the fund balance. Did you last year? You did not. Right, 'cause you're trying to build up.
No, because we... We have been striving to keep it at a floor of $250,000 or higher.
Right.
But we, and historically, we applied $100,000 each year.
Right. So this would be the...
Up until a year or two years ago, when we didn't have that money to do that. Which is in part why it hurts so much, because we had to raise an extra $100,000 off.
Right, for the lack of revenue.
Yeah.
So that is the thing about fund balance. How you apply the fund balance impacts not just like maybe, maybe it lowers your tax rate this year, but if you don't have it for the next year, you're immediately in the hole starting out. So it's worth thinking about how you wanna play that one.
Not that I'm advocating using any fund balance, given the numbers you just proposed.
Right.
But what is your view on changing that sort of $300,000 safe number, given that special ed is now at the SU and not here, and we might not have fluctuations attributable to special ed?
That's interesting. That's the first time that's come up, but that's true. You know, at the SU, you know that we reduced the contingency in special ed by half because we're in a bigger pool. It never happens that in every single one of our schools, there's an extraordinary cost. But it does happen. It's hit probably every single one of our schools and one time or another in the last eight years. Pool together, we feel it's conservative to just say, go down by half, and we'll monitor those numbers and look at that next year. I hadn't stopped to think about what the impact on the locals then in terms of... Yeah. So that would be a good conversation to have with Bob.
Yeah.
I'm guessing you could bring that, the...
I think it's a valid point, but given the numbers that you've said, I don't know that it's something that we necessarily should engage in right now, 'cause they're still pretty low.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
And I'm just gonna double check the number. Bob is away today, and I would've checked with him. But from the last FMR, I thought the number was different. So I'm just gonna check with him, just to be sure that...
So this is Bob's number, though?
Mm-hmm. Yeah. I just wanted to double check, just to make sure.
So the numbers you gave us were, with our base and the moving parts, the enrollment, two cents on the statewide tax, and the increase in the basic block rent, our tax rate would go slightly down?
Yeah.
Just wanna say it again.
If all, if all of, if all of these things...
I just wanted to say it.
You know, I will tell you, when I'm covering for Bob, he wants to put a muzzle on me, because I am more willing to share information than he is. You may have noticed that before. I'm very, very willing to say, hey, hypothetically speaking here, and this is what we're hearing. Whereas he's much more guarded about that. Like, until you get the official number, and he's right. He's in the right department, you know? But he says here in bold, voters likely will see a rate decrease. Subject to change. It's all those other moving parts. What does the legislature do? What happens with the last equalized pupil number that is then cast in stone? Does the health rate really go down to 5%?
And then in terms of where we were last time we met in trying to keep our increase at or slightly below last year's, that the one thing that benefited us was the healthcare savings. That would be, right, we'd be in better shape.
I'm gonna take us through that journey, yeah.
So can I just ask, so the only number that you mentioned that actually affects the fixed dollar amount of the budget is the healthcare number, the $30,000. Everything else you talked about will adjust the tax rate.
Yes.
But not how much you're spending?
Exactly.
Okay.
That's right.
Equalized people affect revenue?
Affects revenue, exactly.
Equalized people.
In the future or today?
For next budget.
For next year, because you're up 3% in equalized pupil.
So the 2.07 number that was at the last meeting, which was the increase in the budget, would be like, with the $30,000, $30,000 in healthcare, like 1.7 or 1.8, something like that?
I think that'll, once we go through the decision packets and you see the adds and the reductions, and then the number might...
Okay.
But I don't know if there's any other questions for Elaine on the financial.
I got two questions. Question one is, the pupil count, when is that fixed? So do, is that still a moving number? We don't know what it's gonna be.
Yes, right.
Okay.
We don't, we do not know for sure. We've gotten from Brad James at the D O, at the agency, the number that's the early estimate. So he sends that out to everyone, and he says, so, take a look. Anything look wrong to you? And then if they've made some huge mistake, like they've, you know, tagged, hunt, they've, they've, probably no one's calling if they've got a number that looks like this. But if somebody sees that they've got, they're tagged for 30 fewer pupils, and they're saying, I don't see it, now that starts looking at.
Okay.
We're not expecting that, but...
That might answer my second question, is when do we get to see this chart?
Not till January mid.
Because we need to know a bunch of information.
Right, because then we have all of the numbers, and then they're cast in stone.
Can you help me understand how this equals people, please?
Because the two numbers I wrote down were 505 and 520.
Right, and that's not necessarily the real number of kids you have here.
What is it going from and to?
505.44.
Is what we have now?
Yep.
And it's going to 520?
.44.
So that's just, that's not what our population is, Stacy.
Right. The .44 is the key indicator that these are not real.
Yeah, they're not real kids, yeah.
They're real people, but portions of.
Aren't they based on two years?
But this is the math behind coming up with a number that determines...
How much basin amount you get for revenue for your budget.
And that is a calculation based on, wasn't it like the prior years?
Two years back.
Average or something.
Average of the two years back.
You think they would have that now?
They, the, no, that's the number that, we've got the preliminary number, the five, or is it here?
But if it's based on historical data, do they have it?
520.44? No, they've, they've actually run the numbers, but like I said, they're shopping it out and saying, does this look right to you? And they're waiting for superintendents and business managers to call and say, yoo-hoo, mine looks really off. And as soon as they've cleared that hurdle, then they'll send out the official copy.
Okay. So we have revenue going up and expenses going down. Good, good, good.
Yes.
One final comment. I just wanna make sure, Keith, that we get a chance at some point to revisit, it's probably premature, a fund balance discussion amongst the board, what our thinking is at some point. So whenever that's appropriate, let me know. But I think that's a topic worthwhile touching.
Well, 4.12 tonight is to talk about fund balance.
Perfect. If I looked at the agenda, I could've just withheld that question, right?
Nice segue.
If we're on four, are we done with 4.11?
Yes.
All right, let's, have at it, Bill.
Well, Kathy's, my, my thinking is, is Kathy's secondarily wanting to hear that the tax rate might go down. I think this is a time for us to build the fund balance. You know, you know, I mean, if we get the fund balances to 300, and then we have to do a capital project, we could do that. Find part of it with that instead of the, going to the voters. So that's, that's my, my perspective.
Can I ask a question? The comment you made before about special ed and the fund balance, I guess I didn't get it. So how do we know how much is enough?
That is the...
Million dollar question, probably.
Risk management.
Yeah.
That's really the answer.
My, my point was this, Stacy. So historically, one of the things that can make costs go up and down is special ed costs. Because, you know...
Okay, your unknown factor.
One or more children come into or out of the school can, and the IEP that they have might require certain additional costs.
That you're required to...
That we're required to do.
Right.
So now that, now that the potential for, if that happens, those costs are absorbed at the SU, they're not here anymore at the locals. So therefore, do, has there been consideration of whether the old approach to what was a prudent number, has that been examined under the new regime?
Because the other main thing that you would have a fund balance for is in the eventuality that your roof might blow off someday. And you need the money right then. And honestly, that happened in one of our SU schools, not that many years ago. So that's the other piece, or your, or your boiler goes.
My memory was that we were looking, 250 was our targeted fund balance.
I seem to recall 300 as the number that we strove for, and 250 was something we were comfortable with historically.
I think I remember below 200, we all started getting E and C.
Yes, I would agree with that. And, and it sounds like that's what we have as official number now. Although, it could be trending higher because of their work getting it higher, and you guys are doing a great job doing that. But it sounds like it's still not at a level that we might be comfortable with. That's what I'm hearing. That's what I clearly heard from you. And that's what I'm sort of hearing from Kathy and Stacy, who's nodding her head as well, so.
Sure.
I say the lawyerly thing. You have to answer affirmatively. You have to audibly answer. All right, any further thoughts on fund balance, buddy, anyone?
So what, what is the projected amount at this point?
Can you rephrase what you said about where, how we get to the 221 number?
So each, at each quarter financial management review, they incur all of the costs that they foresee for the whole year. And when they do that for Heinsberg, at the end of the first quarter, they have a balance of $221,545. Obviously, we're just, we're in December. Things can change. You know, we'll get a second quarter FMR in January, and that'll be an opportunity to see, okay, is that, that's still a good number. Sometimes that number goes up. Something happens during the year that causes one of those expenses to be reduced.
Seems pretty thin to me historically.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
I actually wouldn't spend it.
Yeah.
Yeah, and just, I would agree with what everybody has said. You know, if, if we're lucky enough to finish with that 221, then our fund balance at your end would be 380. So I just wanna make sure that people are...
The nice thing about having a good fund balance at the end of this year, because who knows what next year will bring, was that you really could, after, after the budget gets passed, and you have a little time to think about it, map out, how would you like to use fund balance?
Yeah.
To support the budget in a sustainable way, as opposed to, oh my God, we need a lot of money this year. Oh, we don't have any money next year. And then you get that yin and yang of the tax rate. You know, there's a way to do that so that just in how you're appropriating the fund balance, you're equalizing the impact on voters.
And I like the way the board historically handled it, where they had $100,000 every year. So when you would go to vote every year, you would see that same article that says, we're gonna apply $100,000. And I think people got it. And we almost counted on it until a couple of years ago.
So your conversation would have to be whether it's 100 or it's less than 100 now. Because the other thing is, historically, we had a whole lot more money in our system. And really, we have been on a journey since like 2008, I will say, where we have cut, 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 cut. Which means it's harder to turn a balance at the end of the year.
Yeah.
Much, much harder than it used to be, so.
Just to clarify, at the end of last year, the fund balance was $159,877. And if everything went awesome at the end of this year, would that $221,545 get added to the $159,000? And that's, and the fund balance at that point would be 380, one or whatever.
Right, right.
So is 221 a pretty high trending number at this really?
It seems like a high number.
That I don't know.
I can, yeah, I can explain that a little bit. So one of the things that will be shown in the decision packet is the, we still have a .3 open admin position, which is a healthy amount. We, we were trying to figure out how we were gonna cover that and things like that. And Allegra and I just decided, you know, we have the resources here that...
We'll just do it.
Yeah, we'll just do it. So that's a, that's a pretty high number. The other, the other significant number, the reason why it's trending so high, is because when, when we approved the seven paris specialists, Cindy Caidman Warren gives us a ballpark of what she believes that those paris specialists would eventually be hired at. And, and she projected, she projected where she thought, but we ended up hiring people that weren't as expensive as she budgeted. So those two things are, what I can point out is that the really clear indication. And, yeah, and there's, there's still an open position, so, an open paris position. So all of those things factored in, it's just, again, us trying to be as, as frugal as we can, but making sure that, that everybody has what they need here. So... So yes, it's trending high, but unless something unforeseen happens, we should finish. And the positive, just how well is, is the question.
I, I would look for affirmation from the board on this, but it seems much better to bank on money that's in the bank than on the speculation that it's going to be in the bank.
Right.
Oh, I'm sorry.
All right. Think we killed fund balance. So on to decision packets.
So Allegra and I listened. The, the thing that we heard was hoping to come in around two and a half is what we left here thinking of. I know people fluctuated a little bit in terms of the exact number, but we heard that you wanted to land somewhere around 2.5%. We, we heard that takeaway was, because the money is there, we shouldn't necessarily spend it. Let's make sure that everything that you put forward is, is a, is a need and not a want. And we, we listened to that. We've made a couple of adjustments since the last time, but most of what I, I will present tonight is gonna be a review of, of last time we met. I guess it was just, was it last week?
No.
Two weeks ago.
Just before Thanksgiving.
So two weeks ago.
Sure. And so there's two sheets coming around. One is just the, the presentation where you can take notes on the other. And then the other packet is the decision packets outlined a little bit more clearly, just so you have for your notes later on.
Can you see okay? Are you sure?
So bringing us back to our mission, we always like to start every, every meeting with that. The one piece that I, I haven't really wavered on is the new classroom teacher position. And again, I'm, I have this as a seven, eight position. I want to remind the board that if we have a large kindergarten class come in next year, I may be coming back to you having that conversation. But as of right now, one classroom teacher? Should I go through and then have the discussion? Go through?
Yeah.
Because it's mainly, it's mainly...
That's, anyone thoughts? Hear them all and then talk about them, as opposed to talking about each one individually?
Yeah, well.
Yeah. The change here that you're gonna see is I kept the increase of .2 in the art program. I did decrease from my initial estimate of a .2 increase in world language to a .05 in world language. That's going to allow us to have the five days in seventh and eighth grade. And we're looking at scheduling, I'm working with Cindy to see if, if that's gonna affect the rest of the program. We're just trying to work on FTE calculations, how many classes teachers can teach. But I'm feeling pretty good unless something happens that, that if we increase a .05, it's gonna increase the workload, but I still think that I'm gonna be okay in terms of staying true to the, the FTE calculations that Human Resource puts out for CSSU.
And right now, are they four days?
So the, the full-time equivalent is what we go by. So one of our teachers is a .75 FTE, and the other one is a .8 FTE. So next year, they would both be a .8 FTE.
But the idea is they would be working five days a week, so middle school.
I just remember last time you were talking about the number of days kids get world language.
So what, by doing the .05, what changes in terms of...
So even if somebody is at a .5, it's still Allegra in my decision whether they work five days a week, four days a week, whatever. So you can't, like, sometimes what I do is .8 is four days a week, 'cause it's 80%. But, but this would allow them to work for seventh and eighth graders to have world language five days a week.
And right now, they have...
Currently, they have four days a week.
Okay, that was my question.
We're gonna be, maybe we can pass that out now too?
Sure.
Thank you. Is, you had asked Elaine to come today with a world language across the CSSU, all the different schools. So she was kind enough to do that for you, and we have that matrix that's coming around now. So all that does is compare where we are with our world language program, where neighboring schools are as well. And on the other side of that sheet, while you have that sheet in front of you, it also lets you see where we are compared in art, music, band, choral, things of that nature too. And as you're digesting that information, the increased salary of the behavior interventionist is also, that stayed the same as last time. Bill, you asked me to do some digging on the lawn care services? And I couldn't remember the exact question, but the, the $10,000, the salary and the benefits were taken into account when the baseline was given to you. So the salary and the benefits of the people that did the lawn care services, our HCS employees, were already factored out of the baseline. And the $10,000 is, is how much more expense we would have to incur on the expense side to, to have someone else do it. Bob Mason has told us that it's, it's either a net neutral, us outsourcing it to someone else, or we're actually saving money by doing it this way. And I'm not sure if that even answers your question, but if, if we did away with our lawn care service outsourcing, we would end up spending more in the budget.
Okay, that's my, so now, right now, we outsource it. And if we bring it in-house, it'll net cost us less.
More.
Correct. So if, if we kept those... Well...
But we're seeing a $10,000 increase.
Yeah, because in your baseline, so if we put those, those in your baseline budget, the, the people, the salary and the benefits have, have already been taken out. So if we put the salary and benefits back into that baseline, you're gonna see a bigger increase than, than what the $10,000 on the expense side is, would entail. Does that make sense?
Why were they taken out of the baseline?
Because we already, this was, this was a decision that was made in June or July of this year to move to a lawn care service outsourced company. So then, the reason why we have to put, I'm gonna take out a little journey, that, well, no, I'm not. The, you're probably wondering why that wasn't a board decision. Is that correct?
No, I trust you to make that decision. No, uh, I, I trust you to make that decision.
Okay, but we don't, we don't have the money in the budget. So in order to put the money into the budget, it needs to be a decision packet. But the decision was already made prior to the baseline being given to you. So we already took that personnel out of the baseline, knowing that we had the lawn care service. Now, now you could say we don't wanna do the lawn care service. That's completely within your realm. But then what we would have to do is we would have to hire out someone to do that. We would have to hire an employee and pay for the gas and things like that.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Maybe just to clarify. The baseline budget where it is now.
Correct.
Does that include the money for the lawn care service?
No.
It doesn't include money for the lawn care service or for somebody in-house?
Let me, let me clarify. Uh, it, it, there's a three thousand dollar line item for lawn care services. For us to use an outside agency, it costs us thirteen thousand dollars. So in that line item, we're ten thousand dollars short in the baseline. So the three thousand would have paid for gas and things like that. The additional money was the salary and the benefits of the person.
And that's where you would see.
The offset.
I'm sorry. I thought I didn't, let me, let me stop it, let me stop.
I feel bad because I don't feel like I'm explaining it at all now.
Is this, is to hire someone to do it instead of having it done in-house? We're gonna have, we're gonna, we're gonna contract it out going forward.
Correct.
Fine. And that's gonna save us money versus buying our own tractor, blah, 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 blah.
Which we used to do.
Which we used.
And a decision was made, so it was taken out of the baseline. Because it was more frugal for us to do it this way.
Did we, did we recently buy a new tractor? Or am I, am I thinking or remembering that?
I think that was first.
We bought, we bought a, something to go behind a tractor, but I don't think that came to the board level.
We didn't buy a new launcher? No, I don't.
To, to take care of the baseball diamond.
No, 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 I ju- I thought I remembered a while ago. Maybe it was a few, maybe it was even before I was on the board. Anyway, doesn't matter. Just, that's neither here nor there.
Yeah, we still do all the, the, the plowing and the, the sanding with the, whatever tractor we have. We still have a tractor.
Okay, so if you're sure, oops, sorry, that's my phone. Oh geez, I'm sorry.
It's.
Nice work, Bill.
Yeah, exactly. It's people watching the broadcast, making sure that you're.
They have a question.
Wouldn't that, wouldn't that be, uh? Can't find my phone.
So when you took it on the baseline, you put in three. Three wasn't enough, so now you need ten more to fix it.
We didn't put in.
Three was always in there.
Three was always there. Okay, fine.
You know what it is? It's the way that the budget is formed. And so baseline really is, what are you using September one when we're building this budget? And if it's, if you're, if it's not in the budget, we don't add it at that point. Even though last year, we might have had to use some money to pay for something that there was no other way to find it.
And because it wasn't in the budget, that's why I'm coming to you to say that we need to add it to the budget. And that's why it's here. Because it is your decision. Can I?
Let me just say, I'm, if you're saying, telling me we're, we're spending less, that's all I need to know.
Okay, perfect. The, uh, the roof repair, if, if I were to take you back and, and eat crow once again, this was, um, this was us spending sixty thousand dollars last year on our five-year capital improvement plan for the year. And I, I made the wrong assumption that sixty thousand was gonna be coming over to this year. But we used, uh, the remainder of the, the construction fund, uh, to pay for part of the capital fund last year. So the number was actually thirty-five, so we need to add twenty thousand if we wanna maintain our five-year capital improvement plan.
Which is the sixty-nine wing?
What's that?
Which is the sixty-nine wing?
Uh, the sixty-nine wing is, uh, is that the middle school? The fifty-two is the, the el- the preschool. I think that.
No, it's not the middle school. That would be ninety-eight or something.
Ah, is it?
I think it's.
I should definitely know. Allegra, which one is the sixty? And we're always talking about the wings.
I'm just figuring out fifty-two wing. I know.
It would either have to be the three-five. Or it could be right now.
The primary is where we are right now.
Stacy, thank you for asking that question. There's a roof in this building that needs to be repaired.
There is?
It's over the sixty-nine wing.
So can I ask a question?
Yes, please. Save me.
I don't know if I'm gonna save you. I think I might throw you in the fire. I just wanna understand, because I heard a lot of moving of money.
Yeah.
And I really didn't follow you.
Okay.
So I just, I don't understand why we're adding twenty thousand to the budget.
Because I made a wrong assumption. So last year in our capital improvement plan, we spent sixty thousand. Uh, knowing that we spent sixty thousand last year, I looked at our costs for this year. And I said, oh, we, we must have sixty thousand. So when Tim and I sat down to take a look at the capital improvement plan, one of the sheets that I gave to, gave to you all said it was gonna be covered out of the general fund, because I believed that sixty thousand was in the baseline, because that's what we spent last year. Okay, because it's kinda year to year.
Right, right, right.
But what happened was that part of that, the, a, a portion of that was covered by a remainder of the construction fund.
Ah.
So there is still some money left in the construction fund, which went toward the capital improvement. And once I did the digging to see that the sixty thousand wasn't really taken out of the general fund, that part of it was the construction I had to make up if I stuck with what we decided for the five-year capital improvement, I had to add that additional twenty to cover.
So your baseline is messed up.
It's not messed up, I just.
So we had, isn't that the money that was left from, we did a short bond, a five-year bond?
Mm-hmm.
To do stuff in the white building.
Was the boilers.
In the boilers.
Yep.
We spent that money, we had a little leftover that was the prostates' front of the bond, that, that was used towards this, um.
Capital improvement.
We did it more affordably than what we put the bond out for.
Yeah, that's right. And now to finish it off, we need twenty thousand in this budget to complete the work. So we ben- we benefited from having some money left in our, left over from our capital.
And I can give you a little piece of good news, is that one of the bonds does expire next year. One of the, one of the bonds that you're paying interest. Not, not, uh, uh, a year from now, yeah.
Is it a big one?
Yeah, substantial.
It's probably from the ninety-eight expansion, the middle school, right?
The middle school, yeah.
That makes sense. Yeah.
So can I ask, with the, that roof repair?
Yeah.
Is that twenty thousand dollars more than is already in the, the baseline budget? Or is that just twenty thousand dollars?
Just twenty, uh, for the capital improvement plan, if we stay true to the capital improvement plan, we need an additional twenty thousand. There's two sections of roof that actually have to be repaired. Uh, we, we do have thirty-five thousand dollars in the capital improvement budget line in the, so, so this is just to make sure that we can, uh, do everything that we've outlined.
So this is on top of what's, of thirty-five thousand that we're ready?
Correct, yeah. Yeah, it'll allow us to stay true to our five-year capital improvement and, uh, I wanna use this opportunity just to give kudos to Tim. Uh, Elaine was talking about roofs blowing off and things like that. Tim is so good in terms of maintaining the building and, and projecting out to make sure that what we need gets done in a, in a very systematic way. I went back and I looked at our five-year improvement plan five years ago and like it is just so sequential and the boilers were a great example that we took care of them before anything big happened and.
I just wanted to, know where that fit in with what I was looking at here.
Yeah.
I will say, no, it's great that it's so, been so evened out. I remember at least fifteen years ago, coming out of the school after a Saturday morning budget meeting and, um, Colleen and I going out and someone pointing out to us these big cracks in the front of the building. Like there in the corner there.
He's done an amazing job.
I hadn't known about it, nobody seemed to know about it. This was just gonna come out of someplace. But anyway, sorry.
Lawn and roof, any others? We talked about, um, the amount of cuts that we've, we've taken to our supply line. Um, and putting this back will allow us to replace some furniture. Uh, there's some curricular, uh, areas that are gonna be asking for more money because of NGSS, because of, um, new things coming down that we have to cover, so.
What's, what's NGSS?
Next generation.
Science.
Standards.
Standards.
Yeah. So that one is pretty self-explanatory. And then.
Can you go back to that last one for a sec?
Yeah.
Um, last week, that was like thirty thousand?
No, I didn't, I didn't change that one.
You didn't?
No.
Oh, my memory's gone. Maybe I was looking at the other one.
Did you wanna give me thirty?
No.
I almost said it was two weeks ago.
Yeah, right, two weeks ago, last week for him. Um.
No, that, that's been at fifteen.
So do you guys have a plan for using that amount of money in terms of like what you wanna get?
And to be honest with you, uh, kind of our MO is that this is cutting it close. This is bare minimum.
I think our classrooms have been very fortunate to have pie the last couple of years.
Yeah.
But these, look, we need chairs. We have, we need tables. We need, and we haven't been purchasing them at the rate that we should have been to replenish what, you know, we have. So we do need things like that.
I will say from my personal experience with my kids, I've heard about teachers going and buying supplies themselves.
Absolutely.
I, I, I don't like to hear that. I mean, that's, that's not their job to go buy supplies to their classroom, so, um, this is good, good news to me.
Does this include chairs for the computer lab?
No, we, we need to, we need to find that money this year. Because, um, it's a real issue when you, especially, uh, for regular classroom instruction, not a big deal. But if, if there's a high-stakes Common Core assessment happening in that room, I want the kids to be able to be stationary.
Yeah.
So. So there's the reduction in expenses. I, I do wanna, uh, point out that the healthcare adjustment, uh, let's cover that number up. Because it's, that's the one that, that can change. Uh, these other numbers, the net administrative decrease, uh, this is, these two numbers are in the baseline right now, the forty and the twenty-five. And that's one of the reasons why we're, we're on the favorable side. Uh, the salary adjustment, we, we have one retirement that's known to us at this point. So the net savings with, with those pieces is, is about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And these are things, uh, where we don't anticipate filling them, so that they would be out of the baseline next year.
Sorry, we question time here or not?
Oh, yeah.
So I know when we, last year when we talked about this shifting of the tier-two services and you went for the seven pairs. Do you folks feel good where you're at with the six? That's, that's adequately serving?
That's a different pair.
Oh.
This was, um.
This is a specialized pair.
Oh, okay.
No, that's a title one.
Type, well, yeah.
So that's the, no, so it wasn't something that was shifted to the S U. So, um, it's something that used to be funded by Title One. For the past several years, we've been, it's been funding out of regular ed because the title money is not what it used to be. And, um, when we saw the kindergarten numbers being lower than we had anticipated, Jeff and I thought, well, let's, we knew we had to hire one person to help support the Title One program out of regular ed money, but we wanted to hold off and see if we really needed the person. It was kind of a little bit of a gamble, but we thought with only three classes of kindergarten students instead of four that we'd be able to manage. And, um, it's worked out because of the increase with our paraspecialists. So we did have an increase. So, um, we think that it's, it's very doable now, so we don't, um, see that position for next year.
But if you end up with higher enrollment in kindergarten?
Right. We may.
You may.
We may need that. That's, I mean.
But this is a.
Then we need another teacher. Right, right.
This is a perfect example of that idea of, uh, the need versus the want.
Right.
I mean, we had every right and opportunity to fill that position and, um, but we just, you know, and, well, not we, Allegra really, you know, made sure that the kids had what they needed. And decided that we had adequate service to, to meet our student needs, so. So is anybody doing the math in their head?
Yep.
Can I ask a question about the one?
So I, I believe, uh, that with the, the reduction in expenses, again, not knowing the thirty thousand, let's say it's, it's in that ballpark, you would be at about a two and a half percent increase.
Did you have a question, Dave?
Yeah, the, the one, um, FTE, I guess, teacher, eighty-seven thousand.
What assumptions go into that in terms of years of experience or, uh, you know, is that like a green person or is that someone a lot of years of experience or what's a, what are the assumptions under, underneath that?
Uh, Cindy always runs those numbers for us and in my experience, uh, she always plans for, um.
Six, step six masters family plan.
In, in plain, in plain English, I would say that's someone with a number of years of experience, not green, but not at the higher end either.
With masters and a family plan and a chance. I think that's what it is.
Yeah. And that? Is it?
Thank you, Jeff. Um, I guess just a reminder that these are all discussion points for tonight. We do not have to make a decision on any of them until January. So I think I would just open the floor for discussion of any or all of them. You know, for lack of a better process, I guess we can start to see if anyone has comments on the initial item and see where that goes from there. And, and we'll just see how it goes. And obviously, they listened to our feedback last time. I would presume they'll hear us.
That was a one-time deal.
Hear, hear us this time too. Um, so I will, you know, I'm not gonna go first. So anyone with any thoughts on any or all of them? Again, starting with the classroom teacher, any thoughts?
I would, I would say as a person that's benefited this year for the past six or seven years, I've had class sizes of twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty. This year, with the movement of a, a teacher in the school, we're down to, for a year, eighteen per classroom. It's made a huge difference mentally for a year. Uh, it's made a huge difference, I think, for giving time to students and helps students out as well. Um, and I think that this year's s- current seventh grade group is a very challenging group. And if, uh, if you can reduce sizes in the middle school for a year and help the incoming seventh graders next year with the eighth grade, that will be the eighth grade class to, to reduce the class size a little bit. It'll benefit all the students up there tremendously.
Could you remind us of the class si- I, I, I'm assuming your, the plan is to use this person in the seventh and eighth grade?
Correct.
Can you remind us of what the class sizes are anticipated with and without the extra person?
Uh, yes, so it would be a hundred.
So it was in last?
Hundred, yeah, a hundred and four, is that right?
Hundred and seven.
Hundred and seven. Uh, so that would be a hundred and seven divided by either five or four. So we're looking at twenty-four or, uh, about twenty. Twenty-one, I guess it would be twenty-one point something for the, if, if we had five. The, the interesting piece is that because of, um, math abilities and whatnot, sometimes kids get shifted so that some classes are higher. So even though our average class size upstairs right now is twenty-eight, there is a class size of thirty-one. Um, there's some kids that are advanced and then some students that are, this math seems to be that one area. Paul had the same, uh, situation in his class.
Are there? Obviously for languages and music, there are other teachers. Are there other teachers though working, say, with some of the math students? Um, or with some of the students having trouble with lan- with English language as opposed to world languages? Are there, is there other help?
So we went to a co-teaching model. And our co-teaching model was, uh, integrating a special educator, uh, into some classrooms. Not every team has a co-teacher. Uh, math currently has a co-teacher, um, for two of their classes, one, one seventh and one eighth grade class, uh, where a special educator is teaming with the classroom teacher to provide services. Last year, we went to a model of, uh, paraspecialists and these were, um, pairs with. Last year, we went to a model of, uh, pair of specialists, and these were, um, pairs with, uh, when Allegra and I hired, we, we looked for areas of expertise, and we have a pair of specialists in upstairs that has an area of expertise in math. She's able to be in the classroom supporting students, and then, uh, there's a, a time where most of the kids are off at world language, but the students that need the extra support aren't taking a world language and they're getting that extra support. So that classroom teacher, that pair of specialists is, um, is helping implement, uh, a plan that's designed by the classroom teacher to provide that needed service. So we have a, we, we have, I, I don't wanna say a lot of support, we have support. We're not, I'm not feeling that the student needs are being met. And I think our test scores are one indication. We had, we had thirty, thirty percent of our students that were ready to, uh, going to Algebra One at the high school, and that was one of the lower numbers at the SU, and it's not, you know, I don't, um, well, I am competitive. I wanna be the best in everything. I mean, we do really well in literacy and science, and, and math is an area where we, we need to focus. And it's not for lack of great teachers, it's just, uh, I'm attributing a lot of it to the high class sizes, and Paul could speak to, uh, literacy, it's pretty easy to differentiate, so if everybody's writing a, a paragraph, you can get around to each, uh, everybody is, is given a, a good go, but when you don't understand conceptually a math problem, it's hard to get started unless you have that one-on-one support. And the kids on the high end, too. Let's, I mean, the kids on the high end often, um, need that support, too.
How many of the kids were in the seventh grade?
Uh. If you give me a second, I have those numbers. It's, it's lower.
It's a little lower.
Yeah. I wanna say fifty-two and fifty-five, or I think fifty-five is what's graduating, fifty-two.
There's not gonna be a big change.
Right. Well, this, this year is fine, but after that it gets bad.
Uh, let me, uh, fifty-eight and forty-eight, uh, as of, uh, ten-twenty-two.
So which one is which?
Uh, fifty-eight is the eighth grade, forty-eight is the seventh grade.
I guess, I guess the reason I was asking that is looking at the enrollment with the sixth grade. That would put you at a class size of twenty-five. And then the next year, we have ninety-nine students, which puts you at a class size of twenty.
Forty-four the following year. He said ninety-nine.
Well, nine, forty-four kids in the fifth grade and fifty-five in the sixth grade divided by four, so we're still, I think, you know, tw- twenty-five. I don't know if that's good or not, it seems like it's okay. It's right around the CSSU average of twenty-four. But I think at some point, we're gonna have an issue, 'cause we've got, you know, third grade or fourth grade, got sixty-something kids in these grades. So I don't know when the right time is to add a teacher, but I'm just, I guess, noting my observation on the, the counts here.
It's a great observation, and it's one that I've, I've gone down that road, uh, and I, I've gone down it far enough where I asked Cindy if we would, uh, hire as a one-year or not, and, and you wouldn't, you would hire, you would hire as you would, but I, uh, I obviously know that it would be a one-year position. And I think we could be pretty honest during the interview process is that, uh, based on current numbers, this would be most likely a one-year position, but you would hire them, and then unfortunately, at the end of the year, you would have to riff them, is the.
But you also never know.
Right, yeah.
People retire, right.
Yeah. So, I, I did see, I did see the numbers, I think, um.
So the, the numbers are going down next year?
I was gonna talk about that. So, the, the hard part, Stacy, for me to talk about, oh, well, it's not a hard part.
But I hear all the reasons though, too, so.
Every, every class has its challenges.
Mm, yeah, yeah, yeah.
The, um, the current seventh grade is providing, um, a higher level of need.
Yeah.
Than, than was anticipated, and I really worry about everybody having their needs met.
Yeah.
Uh, next year. And if, it's a challenging, it's, it's challenging to meet the needs of the students in that grade level. So twenty-five in one year may not seem bad for a class. Uh, you could have a class of thirty that seems like fifteen, and you could have a class of fifteen that seems like thirty.
Yeah.
That's the best way to describe it.
No, I can get that. And then is it okay for the students the next year to have one less teacher?
Yeah, because the numbers, like you said, uh, that following year, uh, we would be back down to a.
Hypothetically, right.
And, uh, and again, you know, Paul's, Paul's worked miracles. I, I, I have, uh, that, th- that group seems to be, uh, really functioning well and pretty, yeah, pretty independently. Yeah.
Great.
Correct me if I'm wrong. Can I just be important? We talked about this at school meeting, too, maybe. Based upon our discussion last time, you characterized this person really as a math teacher. Correct?
There's, there's so many different option, um, I've, I've brought, now that it's been a decision packet, I was able to sit down with the seven, eight team, and I, I told them that I presented a decision packet, but I told, I did buffer their expectations. I said, nothing is set in stone until the board approves it, and then the, the community approves it. And I don't wanna get the wheels rolling to, because what Stacy's alluding to is a, is a really interesting, uh, discussion item with the seventh and eighth grade teachers, is that this would be a one-year. I mean, I can be very clear with them that this would be a one-year position, so what does that look like in order to meet the needs of? We wouldn't wanna change the entire middle school dynamic. We wouldn't wanna, you know, upset the apple cart too much just for that one year. So, my, my purpose for putting this in is, is probably what I alluded to is, was the math.
Well, I, I guess, I, I guess my feeling is, is to me personally, twenty-five to twenty-two to twenty-one. To me, that, that number isn't the important number to me. The important number to me is the thirty percent number of kids who are qualified for Alzmer One when they went to CVU. That's the important number to me, especially based upon, I'll reiterate, the dis- discussion Molly had with us at the CSSU meeting last year about showing if kids complete Alzmer One in eighth grade, the amount of success they have, not only academically in college, but in life, is significant. So, I think sometimes we get caught up in this, especially at the board meeting, well, twenty-five to twenty-one kids, that's only three, and we're hiring someone for, you know, that. I think, you know, we gotta be frank about, it sounds like to me what we're really trying to do is serve all those kids, but kinda pull up that number. Is that an accurate characterization?
Uh, I think you're, you're probably spot on that the person that we would hire would definitely be able to teach math. Uh, and possibly in addition to other things as well.
Right.
But the, uh, the trickle-down would, would mean lower classes across the board, which would incre- hopefully increase our academic performance across the board. But math is, is kind of the, the reason behind this decision packet.
Because kids need to take sometimes six classes a week in math.
They all, uh, eighth graders.
Right, right, so it, it'll five-day week, so, so that makes sense. Okay, thank you. But I think, I, let me just back up. I think that's important for us, this is the board, when we get these questions, you know, when it's, they're starting to parse out census versus academic rigor and academic performance. I think, at least my pers- self personally, I'm happy to say, you know what? Data shows we gotta do this, this is why we're doing this, to fix it, so.
And I, I just wanna reiterate how awesome we're doing in science and literacy. I, it's, it, I, but I don't wanna get bogged down in the.
Me either, I don't want us to do awesome in everything.
Yeah.
The thirty percent was, that's how many kids are going to Algebra One?
Who qualified to not take Alzmer One.
Passed out of it.
Correct.
Is that another way of saying going into geometry?
Yeah.
Or higher level math. I mean, there are not a lot of them, but there are some.
I think that's a good point, though.
Just so I had this, you, you see this really as a, having an extra teacher in the middle school for the coming school year, and then presumably not for the, the one after that. Are there any other forms of specialized help you can, you could get in math for a year other than, than a teacher? I don't know if it would be more expensive or less.
I, I would.
Or what's, or what's available, just.
Yeah, I actually, I, I began to play with that notion of, uh, would it only, would we only need a point five? Would we need, uh, uh, a math coach or a math specialist, or anything in those areas? And, and where I landed was, um, again, because of the challenges that the students are presenting, I think the lower class sizes across the board would pro- prove to be beneficial. So even though math would benefit probably the most, I really believe that it's, it's bigger than that. But I did go down that journey in my head to, to wonder if, if there was a different way that we could provide that service.
So, um, Harper may not ask, is there anything we should be doing this year, um, since we probably could've benefited from another? Is there anything we, anything more we can do for this year? I, having thirty kids in a math class is a lot.
Yeah, uh, so.
It's not, I mean, maybe that's not even a fair dis- fair question to ask.
Well, Allegra can attest to this, uh, and Paul can, too. Um, I spend the majority of my days in the seventh and eighth grade classrooms. Uh, I, you know, it's kind of a mobile office at this point, and, and I'm constantly in communication with the math teacher, the special educator, the pair of specialists, trying to figure out how we can make it right. And, um, and we've tossed around a lot of ideas, coming to the board. Me going up there. We haven't asked Paul yet, but we're not far behind. No, it's, it's a, I, I appreciate you asking the question, and, um, we're still feeling like we can make it work, but I, I know that you, you have firsthand knowledge of that.
So I think it's a good idea for, to add a teacher for next year.
All right, thank you, Kathy. Any final thoughts on the first decision packet presented?
I would just agree that I think it's a strong case for both reducing the class size and, um, the hiring of the staff and creating those, the math performance potential. You know, and when I come back to the, you, you mentioned the numbers about the comparatively low number of HCS students going, available for the higher math, and, um, are those numbers that we're going to make public, or?
They are public.
They are public?
They're already public.
And, and where are they? Well, the presentations to the SU board last spring. I'm trying to think when it was on the.
Maybe even the indicators.
School by school?
And indicators, exactly, just even, so again, so last spring, well, so at the SU board, we say, here, here it is across the SU, the total percentage all aggregated together. But then at the local level, each local board says, well, what's ours of that?
Right.
It's pretty easy to see that if you've got, uh, three, four, like, eighth graders across the SU, you've got thirty percent here, you know that, and you know that the SU percentage is fifty-five, that there's something there that's not.
Right, I, I just might have missed that meeting where those numbers were made available by topic, by subject, or by assessment.
And it was again this fall during the indicators presentation, right?
And Paul just.
I just wanna say, we are not trying to hide those numbers. We say, like, it's important to put the numbers out there so that we know what we're dealing with, and then we say, what is the best resource we can put with us? Because we are committed to making sure an ever-increasing number of our students successfully complete Algebra One in eighth grade. It's a major indicator for their continued success. It's not that it, they can't be successful without it.
Right.
But it's an easier route, for sure.
And I wanna thank Paul for bringing me back to the positive, uh, in, in addition to the struggles. We, here at Heinsberg, we have, uh, in the last couple of years, five of the most talented, really gifted mathematicians that, that have, have come through any of our schools, uh, to the point that we had to create different programs. Uh, we had to sit down with parents to figure out, okay, you know, they're at high school levels in seventh grade, and, uh, so. So those conversations are also happening. They're, they're really fun conversations, but we have three students this year that are, uh, out of this world in terms of math, so it's amazing to watch them work, too. So I don't, there's that side of things, too.
All right, thank you. I guess we'll go to the next one and open the floor for comments, questions, discussion on the addition of existing programs, the art teacher increase, the world language increase, and the behavior interventionist salary increase, all three of them being proposals.
So I'll just draw your attention to this sheet that you have, just if you, um, on one side it says K eight, RA, which is related arts, I think they're called that, and Williston UA, which is unified arts, they're called that here.
The same thing.
EA is.
Expressive Arts.
Expressive Arts.
Charlotte.
Okay, so, but it's all the same thing, just different letters. So one, one thing that we noticed was, um, so this is a number of minutes that a child would receive this instruction throughout their time, their nine years out of school. And we looked that we are below the average. Once a week for forty minutes, um, and we were look, the im- impact would be for kindergarten, first, and second grade, so they would have art twice a week. There's a couple of things, reasons for this. One is, um, I think kids really need the visual arts, they're not getting as much of that in the classroom as they used to, because there's so much focus on, as should be, on reading and math and, um, so I think the eye-hand coordination and getting the right side of the brain really working, um, in creative ways is essential for all students, especially our younger learners. Um, and also, the benefit of that would be, it gives teachers more planning time together. Um, which I think the more we look into curriculum and instruction, we know that it, um, we have very skilled teachers here. So that's, teaching is one part of it, but also, also looking at how, the planning. Teachers need more time to plan together. Our teachers are really doing amazing job, looking at all the data that we have, and how are we going to meet the needs of our kids, um, and they just need time to do that with each other, and, um, this would give the benefit of that. Especially, um, K four, they don't have a planning time together every day, all teachers in the grade level. We ha- strive for that, but just the way the schedule works out, it's just no way it can happen. Um, so some grade levels only have a planning period three times a week together, so that's only three opportunities during the day that they might have to work with each other. That being said, your, your teachers at Heinsberg are meeting after school, before school, during the summer, to do their planning. So, um, it's not that it's not happening, but to give that other benefit, when all people are available, the special educator, the, um, math coordinator, the literacy coordinator, the different grade level teachers, when all of the people who are working with the different students have that, and the different expertise are available during the day, it's, um, would benefit that. But really, it's looking at the art instruction that we have here in comparison.
What does that take the place of? The extra art time, is it classroom time that they're getting now with the teachers go doing math, or like?
Yeah, well, it wouldn't be math, but it would be.
But you know what I mean, like, what is it, I'm having a hard time getting, like?
Yeah, and I think that's why we've limited it to ki- kindergarten, first, and second grade.
And I think at one point historically, they used to get this amount.
And I think at one point historically, they used to get this amount.
Right.
Throughout the grades, they got more art than what is, what this kind of.
Right. Yeah, I was kind of surprised that it was only once a week.
And the collaboration, I can just speak to that. I mean, planning is one thing, but when teachers can get together and collaborate and it's it's just that much more powerful.
Right. Yeah. But looking at the skills that an extra period of art also benefits for the children. I think that that's um really essential also. So it was a combination of factors that led us to thinking creatively, how can we get that there? And not to mention if, you know, just with kids' absence, they if they have art on Monday, then they're absent the next Monday, then they have art again. It's especially a kindergarten child, that's two weeks since they've had art, they don't remember what it is. So that kind of continuity relationship with the teacher and more continuity, they can um do more in-depth projects.
Yeah, I mean, the other thing I'd say is that our our teachers are really, do an excellent job of collaborating with us.
Mm-hmm. They do.
So they look at like what we're doing for science or what we're doing for social science, and they try to make projects integrate that.
Right. Right.
Um and so that would help that much more integrate with whatever the K one twos doing.
Right.
Speaking as a parent at this point of two kids, that would be, uh well, one one that would benefit from that. I know that um my sixteen years here, the expectations of what you expect a kid in kindergarten, first and second grade to be able to do and know has risen and risen and risen.
Right.
And I think to give them an extra creative outlet.
Right.
Um would be awesome.
Yeah, I agree.
So this would mean that kids who know K through two would would have art twice a week instead of one?
Yes, for forty minutes, yes.
Any further?
I think we were down to once a week.
Pardon me?
And?
I didn't know we were down to once a week, so.
Yeah.
I think it's important to have that historical perspective that both Tina and Jim have given.
Yeah.
Um I I I I guess each of these is a separate decision pack- package.
Mm-hmm.
Each of them is, I saw in whatever document you handed out, each one's different. So I guess we could talk about each individually, but I'm looking at this one slide and thinking, you know, we could have a discussion of any or all of them.
Right.
Who's gonna start on world language? All right, then I will, fine. So, you know, people are afraid to touch this because it has been such a sensitive topic for years. Um but I think, my recollection of what the community's input was on this is questioning the value of world languages at the lower grade levels. I don't know that I can recall people saying we shouldn't have this investment in the upper grade levels. And as you presented it, this adds a fifth day for the seven eights in their world language classes, which I think is great, separate and apart from then looking at this comparison, seeing that there are a number of schools in our SU that either meet five by forty or four by fifty, both of which are more than our current four by forty. And again, yes, you know, I, we we need to focus on our kids and what they're doing in our school, but we also have to be mindful of how they're set up for CVU. And I I think this obviously, if with one more period per week of world languages, it clearly sets them better for world language study in high school. So that's my two cents.
Yeah, I I I agree with you Keith on the the seven eight piece, going to five days, that makes sense to me, or going, release grade eight. Um but I I struggle with the younger ages in the foreign language.
You know, I've got a second grader and I talked to her about it and say, you know, what do you feel like you've learned? And she obviously is learning things, but I think that classroom time in the first grade, it seems like they would get so much more out of it that same time in the eighth grade, in terms of what they would learn, I don't know. It just seems that that to me, but.
I think if we go back to um, to last year, the world language teachers did a presentation on their program and they um said that they noticed a big difference with the way they were able to start their work with sixth grade because of what was happening first through fifth grade, that they were starting at a different level. So when you look at this, our sixth grade may not be meeting as many times a week as other schools or for as long, but yet they have this other extra added experience that they've started in first grade. So I think um with some of the schools, they're starting fresh right away without having the support of that. I mean, I, there's no, at this point, we haven't done any kind of assessments to see how this, our students perform at CVU differently. And I'm not even quite sure how long this, the prime, the elementary world language program has been going on here, if it's even been going on long enough that you would have that data to look at.
I guess the the comment I would make is, and I appreciate you compiling this information for me, I guess really what more, the additional piece I would have liked to have seen is, again, and if it has was presented to me in the past on a per-school level, I don't remember seeing it, but how how many of our kids, are we doing this because as we felt like in math, we weren't achieving enough kids going into Algebra One?
Mm-hmm.
We're doing this because we feel like we don't have enough kids testing out into Spanish one and French one at the CVU level? And I would have liked to have seen how we compare at that compared to the other schools. And not because I wanna say we're better than them or less than them, but if they're all going out at, if they're all, if twenty-five percent of their kids are testing out, or forty percent, and we're at eighteen percent, then I'd say, let's make the change. If we're at comparison with the rest of our peer schools, then then I'd wonder if if this was an expense we're worth, it's worth incurring.
And I don't know if we can get that information, do you know, Ian? Can we get the world language divided up by school from CVU?
We can, but it's complicated because kids go to CVU. What, we could give you the, what we give you for Algebra One. We could see who tests out of Spanish one and French one going into the high school, so they get placement in French two or Spanish two. Beyond that, it gets very complicated because some kids, instead of going like French two, three, four, they decide to go French two, and then they decide to take Chinese, or, you know what I mean?
No, I think that'd be adequate.
But the really baseline, we can get that.
That'd be adequate.
I'm really struggling with the um the parent hat and the principal hat. And I don't know if I'm allowed to talk as a parent, but I am going to. Um. I don't know what the numbers are gonna be, Bill, and I I didn't base it on how many people were testing out of Spanish or French. When I, when I say is gonna best prepare a student for high school, there's so much um, I believe, that can be taken from the the work, the languages and 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 um and attributed to success in in literacy and reading and writing. Um and and it's not, it, they aren't studying Latin, and we know that Latin has its base roots. And if you're, if you're awesome in Latin, then you can do amazingly well with the with the English language. But um I just, I I think about it as a, as an exposure, I I mentioned that last time. Is that I I look at Vermont as being um so homogeneous in some ways. And that diversity and that that exposure to the to the languages more often in seventh and eighth grade is is one reason why I I've put this forward. Um but I also, I also see kids really excelling in finding a passion for it. And if if that happens four days a week, that that could possibly happen. But I think that we're gonna get a lot more kids that find their, you know, that are able to quote-unquote master something and and take it further when they do get to high school. But those are, those are just, those are gut feelings. So I'm not, you know, I wanna be honest with you that I'm not basing it on, uh I'm I'm, I guess I'm basing it more as with a parent hat, creating that holistic child.
I completely appreciate that, and I and I I trust you folks um, you have a good feel of what's going on in the classrooms. I I just think in a time of where we don't have unlimited resources, that we really have to look hard and fast at these decisions as a board, and we're, I mean, the only thing we have is the money. And we're just gonna make sure we're spending every dollar in a prudent fashion. And I think we need some, sometimes we need some quantitative data to look at it, especially when getting asked questions from the community like, you know, the whatever thousand dollar, whatever it was, that, you know, is this being spent? So, you know, for our own education also, so we can, if we decide to make this decision, we can, you know, speak about it in a in a, meaning of the community to to have them understand why we're doing this.
And I looked, uh I don't, I don't know if I ever got to the point where I looked at completely taking it off the table, but when I saw that I could achieve what I wanted to at a point zero five increase, which is very negligible in the grand scheme, but three thousand dollars is is three thousand dollars. Uh I was, I was very comfortable going forward with that to to the board.
Any discussion on the behavior interventionist? Or anything else to add?
It just ties into the previous conversations about the.
Equity.
Okay.
I'll ask a question about it. Um this is kind of, you should never ask this question, but how's it going with the the additional person we have left here?
Amazing.
Yeah.
Money well spent.
I'm I'm worried that we won't be able to keep them.
Oh.
Is there more um in-classroom activity by the guidance behavioral group as a whole than there has been in past years?
I find there.
There's like, what is the different, what's the change?
I can talk K four, and then maybe Jeff can talk more five eight. But K four, having someone who's much more proactive, she's able to get out to recess, targeted recesses that she knows she needs to be at almost every day and in the cafeteria. It's not as reactive as it had had been the first year I was here. It's much more proactive, and we've had kids who quickly have come to uh my attention. And we gather as a team, and I just had a parent meeting tonight at four that just took maybe three, three weeks, and the child is completely changed and on a very different uh path right now. And that's really due to, because we have time to work together as a team, and she's really able to be proactive. And there, very quickly, when kids need need that support, um as opposed to she has to go to this one, this one, this one, and then this one, or I'm taking this and she takes, you know. So um it's really helped me also be able to spend more time in the classroom um with teachers and working with teachers and students in different ways, so.
Daily bus check-ins too, is the, which is huge.
Right, yeah. Oh, that is. Yeah.
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 Constantly, uh every single day, checking in with every single bus driver, how the bus ride go.
Right. Yep.
As a parent, um I had an experience with a person this year with my daughter. And she was sort of having issues with a student in her class, just really not being nice. I don't know, bully is the right word, but it wasn't good. And uh she quickly got on top of the issue, and it was great that she was at recess. It was great that she was in the lunchroom because these activities were happening in all these places as well as at Part Two. So she coordinated with the Part Two teachers and so my experience was more than favorable in how my issue was dealt with, with with my daughter.
Could I, could I ask you just a, since I'm not on the board, haven't been sitting during the year, what?
Yeah.
The behavioral interventionist is a person, a full-time person?
Great question. So uh so three years ago, I believe, we put in um to have a behavior interventionist um come and help us out. We had a planning room person for a while. My first year here, we eliminated the planning room person. My second year here, I was coming crying to the board like, help me. Um so we we had the behavior interventionist, uh she came in three years ago. She's been uh, she's been in the same position for three years, she's been incredible. Um last year, we came to the board and um because the ed quality standards uh for the guidance ratio, what, it's it's a bit off here at Heinsberg, but we look at it more as a as a complete team approach to guidance. Uh with a school social worker, behavior interventionist, uh a a school SAP. Um we we heard from the community that there needed to be a different level of support up in the middle level. So we came back to the board and asked for an additional assistant behavior interventionist. So we have, we now have two people there, they're at different salaries. What this budget increase would do would be to ri- raise the level of the person that is upstairs to the same level as the person that works at the K four level.
All right, next one. Roof and lawn care, which is combined into the same decision package, so talk about it together. Okay, that's fine, that's fine with me.
Yeah.
My jo- my job is just to make sure everyone has a chance to say the piece.
The horse is laying down, it's not sleeping.
I'm satisfied with that line, Lou.
All right, and then the additional supply cost. Thoughts, comments, discussion? I'll just say thank you. We've been cutting this thing to the bone for the last several years, and I'm glad you thought to put this in. Right. Um any thoughts, further thoughts on the reduction in sp- expenses?
I'll take one.
So it seems of the of the four things there, three are definite or within our control.
Yes.
And the fourth one is based on history, likely, but beyond our control.
Yeah, and I should have taken it out without it being a firm number. Bob Mason is gonna be mad at me.
Well.
No, it's all.
I I, I didn't go to law school because I'm good at math, but my calculation of the aggregate cost of all the decision packets you've presented is a hundred and fifty-five grand. The net savings, including healthcare, is one twenty, meaning that the aggregate increase in expenses is thirty-five grand, which is point three nine percent. If you back out the thirty thousand of healthcare adjustment to zero, which probably isn't likely, but if you back it out to zero, the increase is sixty-five thousand with a point seven two percent increase over and above the two point oh seven baseline.
Did everybody else do those numbers? That's it?
What was the percentage with the savings?
So with the savings, it's point three nine percent. So you add that to the point, to two point oh seven budget, baseline budget, and you're just shy of two point five. And even if we didn't have a nickel in healthcare or savings, you're still at about.
Which you will.
Which, I'm sorry?
Which you will have.
We'll have something, yeah.
That's five percent.
You'd have two, two point nine percent.
The same.
I keep getting caught up on your numbers, two point nine percent, wh- what is that?
Two point nine pers- what I'm saying is, if we added all of the decision packages, but didn't save a nickel on healthcare, from our assumption. From our assumption, that adds point seven two percent.
Oh, so.
Of, of the budget.
Yeah.
So that's two point seven nine.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's a little mysterious to me.
I, I'm with you.
So, so I think it's, it's based on history, it's probably fair to assume we'll get some of the healthcare savings, if not the entire thirty thousand dollars, but fairly confident we'll get all of it. I, I'm worried, uh, I, I think I've developed a reputation of always being fixated on kindergarten numbers. And I, I frankly, I'm worried about where those are gonna come in, and so it's happened before. That our administrators have come to us late in the year after kindergarten registration and said, ah, we need another kindergarten teacher. So given what I've heard tonight, it sounds like there's a pretty good level of support for hiring a new teacher in the middle school. I wouldn't want to sacrifice that position come June to move that person into kindergarten. So it is possible, it's very conceivable that they'll come back to us in June and say, we need another teacher now that we have the kindergarten numbers, and I would like to have. A little bit of flexibility to at least consider that.
So what does that mean?
How do you accomplish that?
Yeah, that's, that's, I don't, I don't know, I don't know, because I don't wanna build it in the budget, but even if we did, I'm just throwing it out there, even if we did.
Right.
With a roughly two and a half percent increase based on everything we've heard tonight, where would an additional teacher put us?
Well, it's eighty-seven.
Yeah, you have the number, I mean, it's just.
So over there.
Be like three and a half, wouldn't it?
Uh, the.
Cause the, the baseline's nine, the baseline's nine million.
If, if we came to you. If we came to you, it'd be after the budget was approved, and then, then we'd be in the, the position we were in last year, where, where we went to the voters with two teachers, even though one had been with us.
Yeah.
For a year.
Yeah.
But he's saying, where do we find that money in the budget?
Where would you find the money?
In the meantime.
In the meantime, you'd have to use the fund balance.
Possibly, yeah, I mean, we've gotten pretty good at shaving, so, I mean. You know, as, as indicated by how favorable, I, I wouldn't wanna promise again, but.
Yeah, right.
Like, should we?
Excuse the Elaine, I'll try, go ahead.
Mm-hmm.
I was just gonna say, should. We're, we're hoping not to shave anymore.
Right.
I mean, we're hoping to add a little bit of what you have been shaving, and I think. Um, to then have to shave a lot in order to hire someone, I, I, I just think that, especially for the. Students that are here now, I think that would be a disservice. To. And, 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 and knowing that. As voters, you would be voting on hopefully not shaving and hopefully increasing, and then to go back and say, oh, we need to hire a teacher, so we're gonna go back and. Shave a lot, I, I, I don't know if that really sets well.
I just hear, I, I think, if I remember, three or four years ago, we, we tried to really find like. As solid a number as possible of the incoming kindergarten class, by going to area daycare, is going to, you know, front porch forum and asking and, and trying to make a survey and trying to get.
I was just gonna say.
A good idea of a ballpark number as opposed to just looking at the, the data from, well, it's not Bill Smith or whatever, but.
Yeah, I would.
So I don't know if that's possible to do something like that.
That's what I was gonna say, I think the root issue is not knowing the data, is there a way to find out the data, and I feel like. When, when my daughter went, and she's in second grade, I feel like when she was entering kindergarten, there was a survey, we got a letter or something.
Yeah.
Uh, confirming if we thought, our daughter was.
I think they're still, yeah, it's in the citizen, it's in the old quarter.
So let's, can we, can we play hypothetical? Let's say we have seventy kids in kindergarten.
Compared to what, what do we have now?
Probably assuming now.
So fifty?
So we're assuming three teachers, so let's say, let's say we assume the four, what, I, maybe that would help with the, the thought process and moving.
Maybe if you don't add the art program, maybe you don't add the world language, that's maybe what you do.
That's not what I.
No, I'm just saying, that's maybe what we would have to do, that's, that's, that's the answer, I mean, I think, I think.
Right.
Keith Mosalon.
No, Keith Mosalon, right.
No, I, I think what, what Keith's saying is, it's, it's a point well taken is.
Do you present some, I'm, I'm, I'm not clear in, in how you think through, do you present something to the public and this is what we're gonna do, and then re, renege on those positions?
Yeah, yeah.
In order to do something else?
They're approving, they're, they're approving a budget.
They're approving a budget, they're approving, they're approving a budget.
Right.
I, I think, I think what Keith's, what Keith, I don't mean to speak for Keith, I'll, I'll speak for me, but I think what agreement is, I think we're, at least I feel like that. The eighth grade teacher, at least for a year, is of paramount importance. That's what I'm hearing, and if we get seventy kindergarteners, we can't throw seventy kindergarteners to three teachers. So we wanna have the ability to, to do both if we have to, and then to Keith's point, I don't know how we do that, but we just hate to paint ourselves into a corner.
I, I'm wondering, um, uh, if you think that the voters were more likely, uh, vote based on. Increase in school budget or, or vote based on tax rate?
We hope that they vote more based on equalized per pupil cost, because that's really the figure that means anything, those other ones are.
Right. Because I think based on the revenue, like.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I, I don't wanna lose sight about the revenue and the, the positives that Elaine started the meeting with, because even though our budget could be increasing. From two and a half to three and a half percent. The, all the other indicator, most of the other indicators are positive for us in Heinsberg because of our growing population and.
I, I think in my perception, Australian ballot, people look at the budget increase number, that's what I think, that's the easiest thing for them to grab onto, people can't do the tax rate calculation. So and so people look at five percent budget increase, oh, that's outrageous, two, two and a half? That's, seems like they're being responsible, that's my perception, I could be wrong.
I'm, I'm personally blown away at the trending of two hundred twenty-one thousand, that's like two and a half percent, that's like the entire amount of increase that we're looking at. For this year, I mean, that's significant, I don't know what it's been in years past, but, I mean, if it's true, if that holds true. And you have a fund balance at the end of the year of three hundred and eighty thousand dollars, I don't know what the, what is it, end of June or something, that that's where that's kept in? I mean, that's, that's a lot, uh, that to me is, I don't know what the board wants in terms of a fund balance, but to me, you got a little bit of money to play with there, I mean. You know, you go in, you have a budget, um, yeah, you know, out of respect for the voters, you don't wanna go over it, but you're coming under it this year, two hundred twenty-one thousand dollars, so. To me, you're gonna have, hopefully s- a little bit of a slush on there.
I think you're right that you'd have some money in, in the bank, but you can't spend it the next year unless, you can only spend what they approve, even if you have a fat bank account. You still can't spend it, they can only, they, the, the administration can only spend as much money as the voters approve.
Exactly.
You can move it around with the, the, with the board's approval.
Right, it was a whole budget, but only within the.
Okay, realize that, so you can underspend, but you can't overspend.
Yeah. Right, right.
But the board could decide to put a hundred thousand dollars toward.
The tax money.
But that's just a budget time, you can't do that mid-year, it's.
That doesn't, that doesn't change the fundamentals of this conversation.
Right, so, but one of the thing, you know, you do have big ticket items, so if we're still trending that way, which would be, in a perfect world, that'd be great. I don't know if that will actually play out that way, and we get big kindergarten numbers, we could look at doing some of our purchases that we would normally do after July one. We could do them before, so, like our technology purchases, so we know that's going to be.
Right.
That's a solution.
That's a good.
Sixty thousand, I don't know, whatever it is, so we could look to do that in this year's budget, because we won't be overspending this year's budget, and then that starts to alleviate. The money for next year, so there's that.
There's supplies, we were talking.
Maybe do some of the supplies, so things that we can purchase ahead.
And when is kindergarten registration?
Um, we're gonna do it at the beginning of April.
So there might even be some maintenance things that you could do in the spring instead of.
Right. So we've done, schools have done that before, if that remains true.
I've asked this, I asked this question before, and I think you told me why we can do it, but.
Is moving up kindergarten registration not feasible and the number's not accurate?
We do it pretty early now.
Not doable, okay, so that's, that's early as it is, okay.
Yeah, we're really early. We still get a lot of people who come, well, not as many this summer, but there's still.
Stragglous. Okay, so it just wouldn't give you, if you did that, it wouldn't give you a solid enough number as you feel, okay.
Is, is it worth doing a survey of some sort now of the?
We have data available.
Yeah, so the number we, yeah.
I've been poring through my books trying to find it, and of course you can't find it.
Yeah, so both Bill Smith's number and this, is it NASDAQ or something?
There's a really, really small.
Yeah, the chart, I can't read.
There's a really, really small slide from Heinsberg.
Right.
Yeah, I have it right here, but I can't read any of it.
Yeah.
So it's about, it's fifty-five, I think, and both Bill Smith's numbers that he projected, the last year he did it and this one are the same.
What is, what is? What is that, fifty-five based on?
Birth.
Well, we have this, we have this discussion.
Five years ago.
But it doesn't take into account. People that have moved since.
I have to tell you, in my however many, I mean, I think those numbers have been right.
Oh, really?
Three times, I mean, I just, so it's a good ballpark, but then you're gonna get a class of ninety-five, that happened to me one year in Shelburne, it was like, whoa.
Right.
No idea, none of the, we would talk to the daycares and people ahead of time to try and get that information and there was no inkling. And then we did register, it was wild, it was wild.
So the, the, the first, the current first year, the first grade class, we did do a, uh, I remember Bob Goodron and I. Doing the most comprehensive survey we could ever think of, and, uh, and we came up with fifty-five, and for us, I was like, wow, that's way above what Bill Smith is projecting. And then almost every day thereafter, we would get like one or two kids, and it became a joke, you know, I mean.
Seventy-three.
Devol, I'd be like, you're up to sixty-two, and I'm like, ah, then sixty-four, and then sixty-eight, and I'm like, all right, stop, like.
I know, Mark.
But, yeah, but that was the most comprehensive survey that we've done to date, and it, and it came in.
Was it accurate?
No, well, no.
No, that's, they were still off by ten or twelve.
You know, and it took, you know, you had people moving out of town who, who aren't of a generation that are having kids and a new family.
To fifteen kids. Right.
But I don't wanna say it's not worth exploring, I just, the, the one time that we did it, I mean, it, it took a tremendous amount of time on our admin assistant and, uh.
Yeah, it's.
And that's why it kinda became funny is that after a while, it just, yeah.
Is that a project pie could take on for you?
Possibly.
Possibly.
Yeah, I.
It's a good idea.
Door to door, I, I would.
Well, just survey mo- survey monkey on front porch forum or.
Later. With the Genevieve, yeah, that'd be great, two birds, one stone.
So, you know, yeah, contrary to the thing that you cannot spend money, you haven't budgeted, you don't have to spend every dollar that you have budgeted.
Right.
So you could, you know, option one is, I think that what you outlined is a good option, another one is to, instead of putting a full position in there, put some contingency, that's what it would be, contingency, you don't spend it. You make a note so that it doesn't become part of the baseline next year if you didn't need to use it, but it kinda protects you, I mean, that's another kind of safe alternative.
So for example, you could keep the, um, we have the reduction in there of the para that we are not fulfilling, so that's twenty-five thousand. So that's a portion of what the cost would be, and then if we do, that would give us the flexibility that if we do have these numbers and, um. We think that we need that for intervention purposes, then it's there, maybe we don't, we don't need it for, it's not enough for a classroom teacher, but we need the support for intervention, then, um. That position would be in the budget, or if we decide we needed to use it for a classroom teacher, we could do that, so that gives you somewhat of a contingency, not the full amount, but some of the amounts.
So just mechanics of how it works, so if you have a budget and you're spending, you're trending, uh, you know, you're gonna have a, you know, zero trending, so you're right on budget.
Mm-hmm.
But then your boiler goes, you need to spend a hundred thousand dollars to fix your boiler. I mean, how does that happen, how is a boiler different than maybe having to hire a teacher, what's the mechanic, what's the difference?
Well, no, it's probably a definition of like what's critical urgent and you couldn't have known.
Okay.
And so you're supposed to be prudent about your budgeting in terms of teachers, nobody expects you to have the total amount in your budget for a roof or a boiler or whatever.
Or a fire.
Or a fire.
That happens, so.
And you can, I mean, the board can go back to the voters and ask for an addition.
Yeah, right, which would be last resort, no.
Yeah, not a good idea.
No.
I, I think we have this discussion every year, the, the risk of the kindergarten enrollment, and I think the question for the administrators is, do you feel com- do you feel comfortable with this budget? Plus the decision packets that you've put in front of us that you could manage to another position, and if you're not. If you're not, if that, if that risk, if you wanna mitigate somewhat at risk, then we have, then we should have another line item or another.
Add to the budget. Contingency.
We'll set, okay, we'll set. Okay, so we.
And you maybe don't, don't answer that tonight, you're thinking about it.
I, I, again, I feel, uh, I, I also had a meeting right before this and, and the, the word that kept coming out of my mouth was fiscally responsible, is that, like, I think that. We've put together a very fiscally responsible budget with the taxpayers in mind, so if we had to go back. And, and if, if we had to come to the board, I would feel a hundred percent okay doing that, because the only thing that's guided our just decisions to this point is what's best for kids. And, you know, I, uh, I would hope that we would be able to find a way to make it happen, I feel fairly, fairly confident we could.
Meaning with the money that you would have to spend, or meaning adding an extra position?
Just, all, all the things that have been discussed, you know, you know, looking at a couple of things that Alager talked about, you know, the early spending, um, the.
Oh, right.
You know, that the contingency is a good idea.
Right, I think having, if it, that twenty-five thousand, that could be helpful either way.
If you've got the twenty-five in there, sort of as a contingency, I mean, that does, I mean, just in, in the budget number, that just shows up as spending.
Yeah.
Even if, I mean, you may know, the board may know that hopefully you're not gonna spend that, but the average voter on an Australian ballot not gonna know it.
Right. Right. Right, it's, right, I was just saying to keep it, it's already in the budget now, in the baseline budget, so it would be something that you could keep, and we can always have positions we don't fill. Like, we haven't filled that this year. It's a, it would be a placeholder.
I just mean, that changes Keith's percentage numbers a little bit.
Mm-hmm, by a quarter of a percent probably. Still keeps it under three. It was something to consider, it's good.
Um, so speaking of consideration. January fourteenth is our next and potentially last meeting, at which we're supposed to approve these things, what do you need from us in order to?
I was gonna ask you the same question.
Right. Okay.
Cause I feel like. My takeaway is that, um. After hearing the discussion, I, I'm thinking that there's a lot of support around many of the items, uh, if, if there's anything that you need us to look at. More closely, that's what I would wanna know. Or if there's areas that you're wondering about that, that weren't brought up.
Phil, is that information that you were requesting about world language, is that something that you need to make a decision about this, or is that something you just wanna have as reference as we move forward and, and other discussions?
Something to question, um. I think it'd be nice to have.
Before the fourteenth, okay.
Yeah, well, I, I can't promise that, but I will definitely check to see if we can get that by the fourteenth.
I first, I'm curious how Charlotte and Heinsberg stack up against Shelburne and Winston, because they're obviously very different perspectives.
Mm-hmm. Well, I was, have talked to the Charlotte principal about this, and he said that, um, there is support once they get to the high school that had, has made a difference. With what is happening in the elementary for world language, but there again, I have to say though, when I started asking questions, I don't know if it, if a. Statistician would have, you know, like, I don't, I don't know how he's designing the questions or any of that, any of that, and that's where it goes to what Jeff was saying, is, it's our. It's our belief in what we know about kids and education, that this makes a difference.
I feel like a conversation could be had with the high school teacher.
I have to say though, they, when you try to talk that way, they will not, they say, we don't know where the kids are from, and I'm glad they don't look at kids that way.
Yeah, right, that's, that's a good thing.
Right, that is a really good thing, so I don't wanna put them in that, but there should be some way.
No, this is our data manager, that's why I say I can't promise, I mean, we ask him, really, we, he is, we're understaffed in that area.
Right.
And I really, I really remember, and this goes back to that it's not, it's not so, my decision to put this in wasn't based on how they test out. And I really, I really remember, and this goes back to that it's not, it's not so, my decision to put this in wasn't based on how they test out, um, because I do remember sitting in one of the CSSU board meetings where I, I believe fifty percent of the kids choose a different language
Right, I know.
in ninth grade, and, um, but I, you know, I think about.
Just cause they want to.
I don't know, I think the, the comparison that keeps coming into my head is Derek Jeter, and he never did any, any one thing great, but it was the intangibles. And I don't, like, I don't know if you can measure the whole child, you know, I mean, how, how do you measure the experiences and the exposure that they're given to different, you know, the, the person that's able to travel the world, how do you measure that, in terms of what it means, and, you know, I'm not saying that's why I, like, they don't go to a magical world when they go upstairs for world language, but it's, it's providing all those different experiences and opportunities that, that's really what I'm taking a look at, I, Elaine will do her due diligence and try to get those numbers, but, um.
And we do live in a pretty homogeneous area, we work, we are up against, um, a lot of the United States is, is bilingual to begin with, and a lot of the world is bilingual just because of, and, and they have that development of their brain through, through that, it's not just, it's not just learning another language, it is a whole development of brain that we're talking about as well.
But any, anything else that we can look into for the board?
I'm gonna, I, I, I didn't hear anything, I think I would agree, and what I'm hearing is a fairly solid consensus of support for all of the decision packets. With some confirmation of wanting to see some data on these vulnerable.
And do you want us to run some official numbers of keeping the twenty-five thousand in there for contingent or not having it in there, do you wanna see that?
I would prefer not to have a contingency, but I'm in there because I gotta be transparent.
Right.
So if you folks feel that this decision package at this number. I know, we completely, at least, I think the board appreciates the fact that you can't say with certainty all these things, and you guys do a really good job, and it really, it used to amaze me, Bob Goodrow would say, oh, I'm gonna, he'd say to us, I'm gonna find the money, and I'd say to myself, how's he gonna do this, and he found it. So if you folks feel confident that you can do, if we approve these decision packets, and then we have to, you come back to us in June and you can find, you feel confident you can find that money to add that other teacher, then I would say leave it the way it is.
I don't wanna walk out of here thinking that, that we promised to find eighty-six thousand dollars, I think, I think what, what I would be comfortable with is that
Ah.
i- if we feel like it's in the best interests of the kids, then we're gonna come back to you with that request. With the assurance that we're gonna do our darndest to, to make it right, but I don't want to bel-, make you believe that.
Mm-hmm.
Wait, what request?
Yeah, I don't.
If there's seventy, can it.
They can't, they can approve the teach, hire a teacher, but they can't approve more money.
Right. Right.
No, right, uh, come back with a request of another teacher for the se-, yeah, for, if there's a class of seventy, then we come back to you with that request of, of, hey, we need another teacher, uh, we're gonna do our part to, to help minimize the impact. But I don't want you to think that I'm promising that we're gonna find eighty-six thousand dollars.
So we need to do some more homework, I think, on that too, to really look at where we could find someone.
Like what, what would the, what would the solution be if you're forced to, to make that decision, yeah?
But as Dave said, you know.
Right. Right.
If we have three hundred and eighty thousand dollars hypothetically in the fund balance at the end of the year, and we know we can't touch it, but if, if worse comes to worse and we run a deficit, you know that.
No, you can't do that, so, but what you can do, honestly, I do know this, you can't do that.
If, yeah, if, you're right.
But what you can do is what you were talking about before, which is in April, when you know what your incoming kindergarten class is, and you realize we're gonna need another teacher, you quickly go to the budget and go, what items can we buy this year? And you don't even need board approval for that, of course, you'd be transparent and you'd let them know, but that's, that's what you can play with.
And maybe we get the roof done before July one.
Right, stuff like that.
And the technology, we can mow all the grass in June.
I like that.
Yes, we can.
Right, there are things like that, that's a, that's a.
May I ask one comment on this, I feel like, of course, uh, that kind of manipulation is, um, smart, and, and we all do it in our household budgets too, when we're suddenly faced with a surprise expense, okay, where can we juggle? I, um, I wanna help counter the feeling of some voters that there's just money out there that you somehow find and it was padded, cause that, I feel like, the, the transparency piece to me
Right.
means let, uh, that's why I would rather see a contingency in there, saying, this is what's gonna be asked for, rather than, oh, we're gonna somehow find it in the savings, cause I think that creates mistrust.
Yeah.
So Chris, and the best way that I can explain that is that, that eighty-seven thousand dollars for the new teacher, um, that teacher, when, when all is said and done, might come in at sixty-five thousand, might come in at seventy-five thousand, it's not.
Right. And then eighty-seven is a percentage of salary plus.
It's a, yeah.
You have to have a.
It's not a hard cash dollar, I know.
You have to have a number.
It's a, it's a safe number, but, um, by no means are we, are we padding anything, we added a lot of positions, like, yeah, and I know, I, I know that.
And I'm not suggesting you are, I'm just worried that there are naysayers in the town that are feeling like, hey, we didn't approve that, but they always come up with the money.
Right.
Yeah, no.
And so we don't need, you know, I don't like that.
Yeah, I think part of it is to remember that this is a nine million dollar budget, and to end up at the end of the year with two hundred thousand dollars is pretty squeaky.
Yeah, that's pretty tight, right.
It's pretty squeaky, and so you expect to end up with that, and if we started getting under a hundred thousand, we would be worried about it, like, oh my gosh. We don't want to be on the front page of the Free Press.
Yeah.
We want to manage our money well, and so I think that it's like when people say that, it's, they're not really understanding the context of a nine million dollar budget.
So the other thing is, if you go to the last page of the, uh, page three of the PowerPoint, the reduction in expenses, so then, those are things that we know about just because we've decided to do them differently, like our net administrative de- decrease, decrease of point three, that's a savings of forty thousand. That's because Jeff and I are taking on those responsibilities that were held, was held by another person, because we, that was the best way to do that. The net para educator decrease, once again, that's a savings that we had, we're not letting go of anybody, that's just a savings that we never filled that position. The retirement, that's twenty-five thousand dollars, that's a salary adjustment, so I think that some of that is not, and that's why it's great to have parents, community members on this, on, working with us on the budget, because then you can say, well, wait a minute, there's no, there's no fluff in the budget. It's because of these things right from the start that we're doing.
And if I got a chance face to face to talk to people, then I would do that, but my, so maybe, I think my point is more about your communication strategy.
Right.
Right.
Great, good point.
And, you know, topics that you can say, hey, I've always wondered, how did they come up with that money, and is that padded, you know, that kind of, and then say,
Yeah.
why, no, it's not, here's how we, you know, I just, so.
You will be assisting me.
I was gonna say, you just volunteer for a committee.
I know.
Yeah, that's what you do.
Good, yeah, and, I mean, cause I do think that's an area that, um, I have a business background in too, so, I'm, I, I would love to help.
That'd be great. Great, thank you, Chris.
I want our town to all feel really great about the budget that they approve. I have one question that I'm done, um, the, the pre-spending tactic, how does that impact the next year's budget? Is that something that we're?
For the baseline?
Yeah, how does that come into play for the following year, does that mean that we
Right.
are kind of putting ourselves in a pickle for the following year as far as a percentage or?
No. No, cause it's based on the budget, it's based on the approved budget.
It's not based on actuals.
Right.
Except for personnel, personnel, that's each individual, but, um, for the rest of the lines.
Right.
It's what was budgeted.
So the baseline.
It's the same number in the bu-, baseline, that same number being the baseline for the next year.
It's just a matter of swapping buckets.
Right, so if we, if forty thousand dollars is in our tech line, and we know we need a new teacher, and so we're gonna spend thirty thousand of it in June because we have a healthy fund balance, next year in the baseline, it'll be forty thousand. Because that's what the budget was.
In a year from now, you're gonna see the baseline depend on what you approve, what the, what the community approves. Like, the money that we'd spend before July one is the, the budget that was looked at when creating the baseline that you're looking at now, if that makes sense. So it's a year removed.
Okay.
You should only do it if you really see yourself in a pickle, otherwise, you should stay away from that.
Oh, right. Yeah, we do, yeah, we.
Yeah, it's probably not good.
All right, um, Sandy, I see two things on a consent agenda, but I don't know that we got minutes. I don't know that I've seen them.
I can distribute them, they were on the website.
Are people comfortable approving minutes?
So, so they did, the only thing I distribute is the agenda, it's where I put all of the agenda materials.
Okay.
I can just add them to the list.
Any objections to moving that to the next meeting's consent agenda? I was, I, I was remiss in looking at them. Um, so then, just confirming next meetings, for us, it's January fourteenth, uh, right here, six o'clock. The SU board has a couple of meetings coming up to talk about its budget, uh, December seventeen, January seven, and February seventeen. Well, the seventeenth is a regular meeting, the first two are budget meetings. Any further thoughts, if none, you know what I'll entertain?
Can I add one final thought, or something that came up at the previous meeting, which, um, I know we're talking about the decision packet, this is more just about the budget in general. There's a major accounting change that's happening, right, with the special ed, and if I were taxpayer parent, of course I am, um, I would look at it and say, what's going on here? Those are some big numbers moving around, and one of the questions I asked was, you know, with this change of accounting method, are there some schools that are winners and some schools are losers? And Bob said, yes, there are, and I wanted to get a sense of how mu-, and we, he said on that, we were probably a winner, I'm trying to get a sense, is that twenty thousand, two hundred thou-, you know, what kind of money?
Can I, can I?
Oh, you wanna, go ahead.
Impact of consolidation and attached sheet from May two thousand fourteen board consideration and vote indicates Heinsberg will likely see a fifty-seven thousand dollar decrease from ADM change alone. CSSU board chair ran the numbers with two thousand sixteen data, and that looks like a forty-three thousand dollar decrease. So that, that's where Heinsberg is, but, uh, we knew that that was one of the questions, and sorry for not bringing that up sooner, I wanted, that's.
Okay, great, that's just what I was.
And before Bob was here, we, uh, when we knew that Bob wasn't gonna be here, we asked the question.
Okay.
So how does that affect the, the numbers that we're looking at?
They're already, it's part of the.
It's already, it's already baked in.
It's part of the baseline.
So it's already baked in, so it's not a.
That's why the baseline's only two oh seven. All right, I'm waiting for it, who wants to give me a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Stacy, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Bill.
Can't second.
With that, we are adjourned, thank you very much, have a great and safe holidays, and we'll see you on January fourteenth.
Thank you, budget buddies.